Please stand and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Gignac?
Here.
Mr. Houghey?
Here.
Mayor Kennedy?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Ms. Dougherty?
Here.
Mr. Gendron?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled school committee meeting of Wednesday, January 20th, 2016. The chair would entertain a motion to approve. We have a motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Gignac. Discussion on the motion. All in favor, all opposed, so voted. The next item are the permissions to enter February 3rd, 2016. Alright, the chair would entertain a motion to approve all three together. We have, um, is there any objection to that? Okay, do we have a motion of that effect by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Gendron? Discussion on the motion. All in favor, all opposed, so voted. Oh, roll call, excuse me.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Houghey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent, approved.
Next item on the agenda are three memorials. We have a memorial for Teresa Tessa Doyle Creamer, sister of Robert Doyle, Assistant Principal of the Daily School. A memorial for Judy Sweet, sister of June Sweet, former school department clerk, Lowell School Committee Recorder and substitute teacher. And for Heidi Falez, Lowell Public School student at New England Pediatrics. And before we do the memorials, the chair would recognize Mr. Houghey.
Thank you, Mayor. Christine Iannuzzo, she just passed away. She's a Lowell High graduate and a loving mother. So to her husband Joe, Paul and Tim Pierzinski, and her daughter Kelly Anne. To the Iannuzzo family and to the Lawrie family, we are all sorry for your loss and God bless you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I wonder if I could request that we send a letter to June Sweet on behalf of the school committee. She served for decades as our recorder and just to offer our condolences on the loss of her sister. I don't know if that's acceptable, but...
Ms. Martin?
I believe that all of the people who are remembered in our memorials will receive a letter from the superintendent's office informing them that they've been remembered.
Oh, great, thank you.
But it isn't particularly appropriate for Ms. Sweet, who was with us for a very, very long time.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next item is subcommittee reports. We have one subcommittee report from the policy subcommittee. Mr. Houghey?
Thanks again, Mayor. Yeah, the policy subcommittee, we met on Wednesday, January 27th at approximately 6:40 PM. I called the meeting to order and Mr. Antonelli, uh, he reviewed present bidding and purchasing policies. And there was a motion made at that, that to approve the changes as proposed. It got seconded and the motion passed two to one. So after we had a discussion and a lot of questions at him, thrown at him, uh, I have now a motion. A motion was made on the floor that the policy DJE be deleted in its entirety and replaced with policy DJER. So that's a motion.
That's a motion from the chairman. Mr. Houghey, is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Mr. Gendron. Discussion on the motion? Mr. Gendron?
Mr. Mayor, I could, I don't know if it's the superintendent, but through you, I'd like to see if we can get a brief explanation on exactly what this, what the intent of this is.
Forgetting. Let me repeat what I said. The, the, the changes, all three changes, the first two policies were just editing, you know, language changes. The third one, the recommendation is to delete it in its entirety and replace it with the revised one. The intent in all of these changes is to align with the city. The, apparently there have been communication between the city purchasing manager and Mr. Antonelli to that effect. And in doing these changes, we will be fully aligned with the city, reminding everybody that our purchases are actually done through the city. So they would like to see us aligned with them so they have a common set of policies.
Any further, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. One of the topics that had come up, and I know the administration's aware of it, we did have a conversation. There is a specific ordinance that's been in place here in the city, specific to the school committee, which did require basically signing authority on anything $5,000 and over, which is what the, the school department has been, has had in place for many, many years. I, I think in terms of the policies as they've been presented, certainly the housekeeping issues, excuse me, changing the titles, absolutely appropriate. I think changing the bid requirements also makes great sense to move those, those numbers from, there are a couple of different ones, but moving it to, you know, when we have to go to public bid, those changes I think make perfect sense. I will say for myself, I have always placed great value on the fact that we get our permission to enter and that we're able to track spending in that way. It has been in the past extremely valuable for this committee to have that information on an ongoing basis. So I would not be comfortable going from, I believe it's going from $5,000 to $35,000, Mr. Superintendent, is that correct?
I don't have the numbers in here with me.
Oh, okay. I believe that, I believe that's the shift. I would far prefer to leave it at the $5,000 number, but I would, you know, certainly welcome comments from, from my colleagues. I think putting the rest of this in place makes perfect sense, but that is the one thing that, that again, has always been of very high value in terms of the way this committee has been, has managed our funds in a very, you know, in a very, I think, specific kind of way. So I would, I would welcome any comments from, from my colleagues on that.
Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the superintendent. Typically, school committees have to sign off on all warrants, including accounts payable and payroll. And in Lowell, it's unique where we designate that authority to the superintendent or his designee, which happens to be the school business administrator. I think changing this policy to $35,000 will, will really, is not a sound business practice for the school committee because we, the only financials that come before us for approval are these permissions to enter. And even if it is five, six thousand, that might be a small amount into the budget, but it is important for us to be made a price of that. So for that reason, I will vote against it.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Gendron?
I would agree with the comments Ms. Martin said, that these permission to enter elements that are on our agenda are sort of a microscope into what's going on into the school, school department. And it's helpful when you see that. It's educational for us when we find out where our money's being spent, even small amounts, to learn, you know, why that's happening and, you know, it's seldom, it's seldom objected to, but if nothing else, it's educational for us. So I, I really wouldn't want to limit that. However, that seems to be a small part of what you're asking for here. Is that, is that true?
Well, there are many changes of, but Mr., as Ms. Connie Martin explained, those are just housekeeping.
So I'm wondering, Mr. Mayor, if it's possible to split that particular line item out from the, from the motion? If that, if the maker of the motion would be willing to accept that, maybe split out the decision on the limit on permission to enter items separately from the rest of the motion?
Well, the motion is already on the floor, but if you could amend the motion...
Yeah, so I will, the superintendent's got his hand up, so why not, before I do that, if it's okay with you, I'd like to hear what he has to say.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, if, if, obviously I was not part of the, the dissubcommittee was handled by Mr. Antonelli. And I think if you require more detailed, I understand there was extensive discussions between him and the city. And this is something that the city is already doing, just to align ourselves. If you feel that we shouldn't be aligning with the city for that reason, I would personally recommend to postpone this until Mr. Antonelli is back because I was not at the meetings that he had with the city folks. And I think it will be more appropriate for him to answer directly to whatever detailed question you may have. That's my suggestion.
So I would say, I would like to make a motion that we amend the motion on the floor to remove the element of limiting, changing the limit on the permission to enter. So I'll make that as a form of a motion, amendment to the motion.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion? Ms. Dougherty?
And then if Mr. Antonelli has more information for us at a subsequent meeting, perhaps we can change that. But for right now, I think it's, let's not stop the progress of the other elements that were on the agenda for that evening.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment? Not, roll call on the amendment?
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Houghey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay, now the vote would be on the motion as amended. Is anybody interested in delaying action on the motion? I don't know that there's such urgency. The superintendent has asked that we, or suggested that we delay action for two weeks. I'm not sure that there's an urgency about this, that you can't wait two weeks. Ms. Martin?
I believe we could, I could make a motion to table this for our next meeting, to hold it in advance, and then it can be readdressed under old business at our next scheduled meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to table until the next meeting? We have a second to that? Mr. Dakota? Discussion on that? All in favor, all opposed, so voted. Okay, moving on to reports of the superintendent. Item nine is a motion to approve for the, of the school year calendar for the year 2016 and 2017. We have a motion to approve. Motion to approve by Ms. Dougherty. Seconded by Mr. Dakota. Discussion. Ms. Martin?
Can I, just one question on the, our no-school day on the state primary day? That's listed here as a Thursday?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what we were told. It's going to be on a Thursday this year.
Wow. That's kind of shocking. We've, I don't think we've ever had a Thursday.
That's what we were told. It never happened before.
How exciting. Okay, thanks.
I think, just as a point of information, I think it's happened a couple of times, and I think it's whenever Jewish holiday falls on that Tuesday. That's what makes them kick it off to Thursday. But I can recall vividly a couple of primaries where it, it's been on Thursday rather than Tuesday. But I'm a lot older than you are, Ms. Martin, so... Any further discussion on the calendar? All in favor, all opposed, so voted? Or roll call, I'm sorry.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Houghey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Next item is for the rescheduling of the school committee meetings. We have, the superintendent is requesting that two school committee meetings be postponed. Any discussion? Ms. Dougherty?
I don't have any strong feelings about postponing it, except that the postponement for April 27th, I would not be able to make that meeting. So I prefer, if we did change the April date, that it not be the 27th. So I don't know if other people have strong feelings either way, but...
Any other? Alright, well, I guess this, the chair will just say that there's a couple of options. One is we can do nothing and have the meetings on the day that it's originally scheduled. Two is we can vote for the superintendent's recommendation to postpone the meetings. And third, that we could, we could vote to not have the meetings on those days. And so we just would skip those meetings, which would then result in a large, a large agenda, I assume, on the, the following meeting day. But there are some committee amendments that might prefer that to, to two meetings. Anyways, we need a motion on the floor to do something.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to cancel the meetings, and if necessary, we'll call a special meeting.
Okay, we've motioned to cancel both meetings and to call a special meeting if necessary. Seconded by Mr. Dakota. Discussion? All in favor, all opposed, or roll call?
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Houghey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Eight yeas appro, uh, seven yeas approved.
Okay, the next item is to revise the school calendar for the year 2015 and 2016. And I...
Yes.
It's, it's only different in that Tuesday, March 1st, there would be no school. That's the presidential primary for Massachusetts. This is for, this for the current school year. Mr. Gendron?
So the good news is, is knock on wood, we haven't had any snow days this year. Last year, this would have been a big problem, but it sounds like a reasonable suggestion, specifically because I've talked to many principals who have voting at their schools, and they're always concerned about people walking in the school to vote while they're in class. So I think it makes sense to do this, especially since we have that leeway.
So is that, is that a motion to approve by?
Sure, that's a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Ms. Dougherty?
Yes, through you to the superintendent. If we cancel school on March 1st, are we adding a day? We have to add a day in June. Okay.
This calendar already has that added day.
It's already on this? Okay, great. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Houghey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
The next item is a life skills program recommendation from superintendent, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to present here for avoid having Mrs. Durkin speak. She's, her voice is a little bit lost. We have an increased number at the Bartlett Special Education, and we are requesting, we have to hire a new teacher and a new para to be in compliance. And we are requesting a transfer of 64,789 from the suspense account to the three various accounts listed here, which is the special ed teacher account, Bartlett Special Ed Education Para Professional, and an employee's health. We looked at the numbers, the business office had looked at the numbers, and I think we can do that from the suspense account. And also wanted to point out that when, when we do have expenses like this resulting from an increase in student numbers down the road, it kind of comes back to us in form. Most of these students had enrolled before October 1st, so hopefully they will be counted in the, the funding from the state, so you get some of that money back anyway. And, and last thing, we do have the principal of the Bartlett here, and we have our director of Special Ed, and they will be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we, we have a motion on the floor? Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Mr. Gignac? Seconded by Mr. Houghey?
I just have a question.
Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question on the funding mechanism. I, I know that we have money available today in the suspense account to cover these costs, but as we all know, there's, there's a tentative deal with the, with the teachers' union that I believe in previous discussions would, would completely wipe out the suspense account based on the projections. So I don't, can you speak on that? If, if this funding is, will be available?
Well, I can't speak to the details because, as you know, the agreement, the tentative agreement we have is not public yet. So we can't speak exactly on the numbers, but we have looked, the business office has looked at both, and we feel it can, it can be done in some way, so...
In the event it can't be, you'll, you'll let us know?
Well, in the event it can't be, is that we, it'll come out of the salary count, which we know is going to be, to have some savings, as I said, every year for, you know, we shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
And, and as I said earlier, we will see some of these in terms of funding back from the state because these are students, for the most part, I had checked before the meeting, for the most part, were enlisted before October 1st, so they are, if they're added, so their funding will come with them as well.
Okay.
So I think it's much more of a, of a logistics, more than anything else, to secure an account to pay from and not have to wait, carry in the negative and not have to wait until the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So you're saying that these students were enrolled, we got them on our October census for this year, or we will get them for next year?
No, most of them, no, they're already here. But they're already here.
Okay, I was just curious about how that, you know, how that would work out with the formula funding. You know, I, I understand, and I certainly understand, within the realm of special ed, we don't have a great deal of flexibility. And, and that's perfectly fine, and I, I support bringing this, these positions on because I do think that, I mean, the case has been made, looking at the caseload, the classroom size, that we need to add this additional support. I'll just say, this is our second meeting in a row where we've added a new position. You know, I, I have concerns. We have all been talking about what our budget is looking like for this year and for next year. The suspense account is not, is being allocated faster than we can catch up. And I just think that it's yet another opportunity as a committee that we need to look at every single expenditure we make. You know, there are, there are different options we have. I know that when we look at Title I, there are different ways that that can be spent that perhaps could have accommodated this. But I think we really need to be extremely careful in the monies that we're spending, that we are directing them towards the classroom at every opportunity, and that has to be our top priority. Again, I recognize we don't have much flexibility in terms of adding, adding what's been requested here. So I'll certainly be supporting it. But I do think over the long haul, it's important for us to, to be aware that there are, there are going to be difficult choices to be made, and this is just representative of one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gendron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wonder if, since she's here, we could have the director of Special Education just give us a brief rundown of her perspective on why this is necessary.
Hi. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor and the school committee. I really want to thank you for this opportunity to speak. This really goes back a couple of years when we first came to you with all of the data, knowing that our special ed numbers have remained the same over several years, but what we noticed is an increase in our sub-separate population. So kids with autism, kids with developmental delays, we're having more and more of those students. So two years ago, when we came to you with a proposal for the realignment, and the school committee was more than generous with us, and we added seven classrooms and some additional support staff, we were able to support our students in district. And at that time, we knew that this life skills population was one we were keeping an eye on. And so last year, when we came to you and we, we started to talk about our needs again, knowing this population is growing, knowing that our autistic population, at the time we had 11 preschool classes funneling into five, and that we were really worried about that. And I know the superintendent mentioned at the last meeting that Assistant Superintendent Janine Durkin has had a task force. We're looking at all of these numbers. We're constantly looking at this. We weren't able to add any classrooms last year, but we were very creative in our solutions, knowing that it was going to be an issue. So one of the things we did was for this life skills classroom, we actually converted a middle school teacher down to an elementary school teacher because we knew our population at the elementary school was growing and to try to put some additional supports there without adding a position. We also, through the realignment process, it gave us some flexibility in terms of grouping kids instructionally where they best fit, and it allowed for some flexibility in the class sizes, that if this class had a few fewer kids, but the student academically was a better match here, it allowed us that flexibility. What we didn't anticipate was 14 new students coming into this program. We knew we had a little bit of wiggle room as students came in, but we've never had such a big influx as 14 students. So we have been working very collaboratively with the district office and with the school-based staff to put in additional supports. Our behavior specialist, who's phenomenal, has been over there trying to put in additional classroom supports and behavior systems. We've been working with the early childhood program to get some more materials in there. It's really been a concerted collaborative effort to build the capacity. However, we've just simply reached the point where our numbers are out of compliance at this point, and we really need to start looking at building the capacity of direct service to students and address the needs in this school so that we can make sure the kids are learning and growing and getting what they need. And as Ms. Martin said, these are very, very difficult choices, and we know that. And we are constantly looking to do things at minimal cost to the school department budget, but we're also keeping an eye on the city budget as well. Because if we cannot add these programs in district and service these students, we're going to have to start moving them out of district, and that comes out of the city budget. And so we really know it's better to keep kids in district. All of the research shows us that. It's better for kids, it's better for families, and it's better for this community in the city of Lowell. So that's why we're making this proposal and how we got here. But it's been very thoughtful and a very collaborative effort to ensure we are building capacity within Lowell Public Schools. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Gendron?
While you're still at the mic, though.
Yeah.
You mentioned that without the position, we'd be out of compliance. What is compliance? You have some numbers here.
Yep, so, I do.
What is compliance? I didn't see the compliance.
Again, I have to take my glasses off to read now, so apologize. So the actual law is CMR 28.06. It's, it's listed there. But what the compliance tells us is that with one teacher and one para professional, we can have up to 12 students. And in preschool, you can have no more than nine students. And so as you can see right now in, in our 3-4 class, we currently have 15 students. And so if we didn't do something to address that issue, we would be looking at at least moving three students out of district because we have no place to put them. And that's not based on their educational needs, it's based on our numbers. And we really want to always be making that decision to move kids out of the least restrictive environment very thoughtfully and not just based on numbers. But I'll be honest with you, as a teacher, and I'm sure Mr. Holtz can speak to this, if you think of a teacher and one para with 12 students who have significant developmental delays, that's a lot. It's, 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 so although that's the legal requirement, it's really not going to ensure that everybody's getting exactly what they need. And so that's why we're making this recommendation. As far as the cost, if we were to look at out of district, it's minimally about $50,000 per student. That doesn't include transportation, and that's if we were to do a collaborative. So again, looking at the city budget and knowing what's best for students.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So certainly, I share the concern of adding positions, and we need to obviously monitor our budget very closely. But one thing that is clear is that an investment in special education is truly a direct, has a direct return. Because if we need to send children... Because if we need to send children who need that level of care out of district, it costs us tenfold what it costs us to hire somebody in this particular case. So I think, while I do share that concern, it certainly makes sense in this case to move forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gendron. Any further discussion? Okay, the motion before us is a motion to approve the transfer of $64,789 in order to pay for one teacher and two pares in the life skills program. Roll call?
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Takoto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
The next item is a response to Steve Gendron's motion on 12/16/2015 regarding Lowell High School athletics program participation. It would be proper to hear from the superintendent first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, as you said, is in response. In front of you are some numbers, some charts reflecting attendance to the various sports with also the totals back to 2012, 2013, all the way to 2015, 16, which I believe Ms. Abrams told me earlier, it's, this is the current year, so these numbers are not complete until the end of the year. It's not a huge drop. That's what I thought initially. It's, we'd have to have the tallies for, at the end of the year to compare.
Mr. Gendron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to refer this report to the athletic subcommittee for analysis. And I'd also like to ask the superintendent if he could request that the athletic director provide us the numbers of coaches in each sport and also start, the discussion I'd like to have in the athletic subcommittee is how in the sports where attendance or participation is lagging, does he have ideas? Can we discuss ideas about how we can better promote that? I want to point out that this is one extracurricular activity that has been proven to help young people sometimes, sometimes, you know, improve their lives, improve their performance in sports, in school. Certainly, there are many other extracurricular activities and we all support them as well. But in this particular domain, we're going to be looking at this, sports as it relates to academic performance and participation. So the motion is to refer this to the athletic subcommittee for analysis.
Okay, and that motion is seconded by Ms. Doherty. Discussion on the motion, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Well, I have to thank my colleague for making this motion because it, my question, my following question would never have come up if I wasn't looking at this information. Would it be possible to get a spending breakdown of certainly the different sports, but I'm particularly interested in the male participants versus female participants and how we're spending that money? I know that we're, we have Title IX, you know, requirements, but just want to ensure that where that money's being spent equitably across both. I may or may not come to your athletic subcommittee, but I'd be curious to know the information.
You're always welcome, Ms. Martin, you know.
It would be a first if I came there, believe me.
Bring cookies if you can.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I would like to just add my support. I think it's an excellent motion to begin with, to look at sports. And I agree with my colleague that extracurricular activities, sports and all sorts of other programs, music, theater, art, have a huge impact on keeping our students engaged, so they're very important. I'd be interested, and I know that Mr. Gendron had already mentioned the number of coaches for each sport. I would agree that the amount being spent for each sport would also be very helpful in getting a fuller picture of the athletic program and the investment. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor? Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just wanted clarification. So you, we want to move this to, so I can tell the coaches, the athletic director to prepare. You want to move this to a subcommittee discussion? And what you would like them to prepare as a report for that subcommittee to discuss would be?
Yeah, in addition to the numbers that they've given us, which is great, I'd also like to see the number of coaches.
Number of coaches in each sport.
As was brought up, the expenditure on each sport divided by male and female participants. And then I'm curious to, to sort of brainstorm with the athletic director about, you know, how we can, what we can do to promote, promote participation. This whole, the motion was, was brought about based on our study that was released a few months ago that showed how urban centers like Lowell lag when it comes to percentage of kids that participate in sports. And then it further went on to talk about how those kids that do participate in sports tend to have more stable academic records. So I think it's, I think it's something worth looking at and is there a way that in an urban city like Lowell, we can inspire more participation? And I want to underscore, because when I brought it up, there were a few comments about, you know, we don't care about other extracurricular activities. And certainly we do, you know, participation in the arts, participation in so many other things also have a similar effect. But here in the athletics subcommittee, we're going to particularly look at this one to start anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gendron. Any further discussion? Just as a point of information, Mr. Gendron, do you think it would be worthwhile to have the receipts from the athletic events also included in the report?
Sure. I think that also would be valuable.
Okay.
Although certainly one wouldn't want to penalize those sports. I mean, it's great to have a sport where you have a, can have a gate and a ticket, but I certainly don't, wouldn't want to penalize the other sports where that type of thing is less likely, but it would be good information to have.
All in favor of the motion? All opposed? So voted. Next item is the advocacy for newcomer program, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some time ago, we had a motion that asked us to follow up on letters that we had sent to all our three, two senators and Representative Sangas, thank you. And thanks to Mr. Gignac, he helped us secure a meeting with all three offices and we held a meeting. And I'm going to let our Assistant Superintendent Claire Abrams give us some details.
Thank you, Superintendent. So we did hold this meeting, as you see in your reports, on January, I need to take mine off, on January 21st, 2016. It was, I would say, a very productive meeting. The representatives from Congresswoman Sangas' office, Kate Machette, Senator Edward Maki's office, Jeremiah Thompson, and Senator Elizabeth Warren's office, Patrick Kenny, met with a list of representatives that you could see from the district on that morning. It was a morning that we had the opportunity as district folk and as well as the people from the city to talk about what this looks like in our district and why we are in need of more funding to help us support and do the work. But you have a chart there that gives you the numbers of how these children and families coming into our district has grown tremendously over the years. Everyone at the table had a voice and expressed that we are doing what we can at this time and everyone's working really hard, developing different models to assist with children, newcomers and children that are coming into the high school with very little schooling, and we're doing what we can. And again, thank the committee for the positions that they did offer up this year to help us with this. But still more needs to be done. And it was very, it was clearly articulated that Lowell does what they have to do and that's what we're always about. But we come to a limit almost when we don't have enough space and we don't have enough funding. So the representatives listened very carefully, very receptive to everyone and what they had to say. And then afterwards, they were able to tour the Riley School. That's one of our schools that has tremendous number of newcomer students. Principal Karabastis set up programs for them to go in and visit. They asked a lot of questions there. They did, I believe, with the superintendent, say that they were happy that Lowell reached out for this, really thrilled that we do that. They have it from other districts, obviously, other urban areas, but were happy that Lowell spoke about it and they really took it to heart. I think it was productive. I think it was well-received and well-represented by everyone at the table. So much so that since the visit, my office and I'm sure the superintendent's office has been receiving questions back from the representatives, what was this and what was that and can you send us more information? So I think it was, it was a long-awaited meeting, but it was well-represented. And again, I thank Mr. Gignac for that, too. So.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I'd certainly add my thanks to Mr. Gignac for facilitating this and for the administration. Obviously, there was a great deal of time and effort that went into hosting these individuals and I think it certainly speaks well of our district that, that we had taken the time and care to do that. I'm sorry to have missed it. I would like to, if I could, request that the administration reach out to Mr. Elliott and Mr. Leary, who were the makers of this motion, and let them know the results of it. I think it would certainly, they'd be pleased to know that there was follow-through and that this did happen. And I, they may have heard it from the city representatives who were in attendance, but still, I think it would be, I'm sure they would appreciate hearing from the administration exactly what the result of their motion was. Thank you.
Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, too, want to mention that just tonight on my walk over here, I bumped into Congresswoman Sangas' deputy chief of staff. And he, he didn't attend the meeting, but he had, had heard great things about the meeting and will be reaching out for more information. And I think all of the representatives are going to be working together to advocate for us. And I just want to mention, on the city side, Councilor Leary, with the full support of the city council, also put on a very similar motion to reach out to them and, and we appreciate their support as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Chair would entertain a motion to approve, to accept as a report of progress by Mr. Gignac and by Ms. Martin? Discussion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted. Next item, businesses, item number 15, Community Service Day. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent Abrams.
So this is in response to Mr. Gendron's motion on our annual Community Service Day. So looking at the calendars and seeing where testing takes place and making sure that we have the proper amount of time to prepare, it looks like the best day for us will be May 31st, 2016. I've already sent information out to principals, asking them, during the course of the year, they're commuting, calculating numbers for other community service hours that they're doing. So we will present that sometime in June as well. But on that day, if they can plan a certain activity, I put it out there and we will be looking back to that. And we will have a meeting, as we did last year, Mr. Gendron, and call you to come for that. So if there's any more specific things that you want to address, that would be fine.
Any further discussion? Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think this is, I think this is the same day we chose last year, the Tuesday after Memorial Day. Seems to be settling in on that day, so I think it's good. It works out well with the school schedule. I look forward to the meetings as we had last year so we can sort of plan activities for that particular day and hopefully we can get more students involved in the day. But really, it's a day that celebrates the thousands of hours of community service that Lowell Public Schools does every year that you really don't hear about. So hopefully, we can bring, shine a light on that and, and help the young people realize how important that is, how important it is to give back to your community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gendron. Any further discussion? Chair would entertain a motion to accept as a report of progress by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Hoi. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted. The next item before the school committee is a response to the Lowell High School investigation report from the task force. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the report as a report of progress. We have a motion by Mr. Gignac to that effect, seconded by Mr. Hoi. Discussion on the motion?
If we could ask the administration to present their recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. We, as you know, the task force had several recommendations in several areas that recommended either some, doing some more work or some things to forward and things to do in the future. You have the report in detail and I think the report is, has been made public, so I'm not going to go through every page. We'll be here for a long time. But I could tell you that Ms. Durkin is also here if you have any specific question on any item. But by and large, we, some of the issues that they have asked us, we either had them, we had them or we had done already quite a bit of work. It was probably not apparent to them. And that's what the first part of our response is in detailing some of the things that, that have been done, whether it's training, whether it's actions taken with respect to policy and the new chapter 222 training. As far as the other recommendations, which I think we find very, very helpful, very, very, very positive, and these are, some of them were also before the report has even came out, we had started working on a few, including, just to name a couple of examples, the, there is, there is new group of stu, task force, if you wish, or committee of students and teachers that sit to advise the administration at the high school on these issues and programs. They have started a new curriculum, new programs and new course in the form of a seminar that deals with that. And one of the biggest initiatives that we're starting is on, we've been trying to launch a, some extensive professional development in the area of what we call courageous conversations, which is, you know, dealing with diversity and awareness of diversity within our schools among all staff and teachers. And to that effect, we got a, we had submitted for a grant to the Parker Foundation and we have gotten the grant. And the first meeting we'll be holding is on February 9th, where we bring in several groups of experts and some institute of interaction from Boston. We, I know that NAACP is involved with us, too, and various other community members and some of the task force members will be attending as well. And of course, our administration. And the hope is, that's a planning meeting on February 9th, and the hope is to establish an ongoing program that we are, we call courageous conversation is to, which is really none other than just a professional development for all staff and teachers. And it's, it's an awareness program. Another thing that we're working very, very much on and you see in the report, it was mentioned, is to try to come up with some, something in terms of program or planning or in diversity of hiring, in bringing, diversifying our staff. It's something we've taken very seriously even before the incident. We had started working on that. Sometimes in March, we will be holding a job fair, early March, that we asked several partners to work with us. We have University of Massachusetts, Middlesex Community College is going to be part of it as, as well as 11 other districts that have accepted to be, and our neighbors to come and be part of that. And the idea is to get as many applicants, as many, as many future teachers involved and try to identify potential high-quality teachers and try to focus on, on people of diverse backgrounds, ethnic backgrounds. So that's, that's one of the things also that we're working very hard with. And, and we're, we're doing a lot of other things and of course, last but not least, immediately, I think within the couple days, the second day of the incident, we had reached out to restorative justice program, which was referred to us by Judge Blitzman. And that has been, that, that group of people, professionals, have been working with our students and our, some of our staff from, I think, the very first week.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent Doherty. Ms. Martin, is that, is that if you, Ms. Doherty? Go ahead, Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you, I have comments and then some questions for the superintendent. First off, I wanted to say, I was disappointed and I know there were some community members who are also frustrated by the amount of material that was redacted from the report. But I'm, I fall in that category of people who follows the advice of my attorneys and I, my understanding as the city solicitor and the school committee attorney felt that this was the best way in terms of protecting personnel privacy and other issues for the city. I think it's important to note that this was an outside task force that was asked... to come in and, and look at the situation, because I feel that as a community, we want to move forward in a positive way, in a learning way with this incident. People make mistakes. People of all ages make mistakes. And what I've always said to my kids, I know I make mistakes, is when we learn from mistakes, then it's not a wasted effort. And so my focus with this report is really on the recommendations of the task force, which have been fully provided to the community, as well as how we as a school department is going to move, are going to move forward with that. So I, I want to start with some of the things I'm very excited about, and as the superintendent mentioned, the new curriculum seminar on diversity, the idea of a Lowell High School task force, and of students and teachers working together, and this idea of the courageous conversations, which we discussed earlier, a grant we had received. I want to make sure that we're moving those conversations at the earlier grades as well, because I think it's not something that's just at the high school. From the beginning, how we work together and study and learn together as a community is important at the youngest grades as well. Some of my questions, and I'll, I'll work from the back, the restorative justice report. In this response from the school department, it said the report will be shared with the Lowell High School community beginning in February. But when are we going to actually see that report? Before then?
Let.
I have other questions, but if you want to address that report in particular. Okay, thank you.
So the report has, we have not received that report to date. And the report is more of a, a working report for the students and the staff who were involved in the restorative circle. So I would have to check with restorative justice to, to determine if that's something that's actually made public. But the, the actions from the report, so let me explain that what, what transpired, and I cannot speak to the confidential nature of the whole process, because that's, that, that is the important piece of this, that those parties that were harmed and the parties who conducted the wrong are, are in agreement to come together and to come up jointly together with some resolutions and plans that they're going to put in place. So it is part of that, the student piece, along with the administrators who were part of the whole process, to actually put forth and act upon those plans. So what will become public is more of the actions that you will see as a result of that. But I'm, I'm really not certain that it would be wise to public, publicize the report that's coming back to the students and the staff that participated in that process. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. You're welcome. Thank you for that explanation. In terms of the, oh, sorry.
That's the report. Yeah, I apologize. Because I do think the restorative justice, bringing them in, I think was a really, I was very supportive of it, and I'm very pleased that we've been working with them. And I appreciate the recommendation from, from Judge Blitzman, and I think that that was really valuable. It may be not so much the report that's important as having the actual students and staff who've been part of this process perhaps have an opportunity to present to the committee what their plans are moving forward. I would, I mean, for myself, I would love to hear from them what they got out of the process. And both from the staff and the student perspective. And if we could perhaps just, and I don't know who's the chair of the high school subcommittee at this point. There you go. Because I know Mr. Gignac would love to host a meeting. And if we could perhaps refer that to the Lowell High Subcommittee, asking that group to, to come and present, once they've had the report, have had a chance to digest it and be able to present to us what they got out of the process and, and hopefully maybe give us some suggestions.
Okay. Ms. Mustardy, you yield on the floor. Are you all done?
I have some more questions.
Okay, then go ahead.
But no, that was a good point. Because I'm.
Okay. So in terms of the, in the 2014, 2015 year, there was, in this report, you talked about some of the steps that had been taken at that time. And the Chapter 222 Advisory Committee that met quarterly through that school year, is that committee still meeting?
That committee is not still meeting, but every administrator, well, we can ask one, but every administrator in the, the school district knows that we're a phone call away, an email away. And our, our council for Student Support Services works with our administrators daily around issues relative to Chapter 222. Questions that come up about, gee, I've got this student, this is, you know, this is what we're thinking, what do you suggest? So.
Thank you. And the reason I asked that specifically was in the recommendations from the task force, one of the things they talked about was clearer, improved reporting forms and a process in place. And the school's response was, we have these reports online, we've, you know, we're following state laws. And I guess I just felt like, you know, are we looking to make those, have we really studied how we are using these forms? Because there were, seemed to be some gaps in, you know, timing and, you know, each student involved, the parents will be contacted by what time, you know. I'm just looking to, as I said from the beginning, make concrete steps towards improving our district, doing it better. So that one was one that concerned me, that are we actually looking at improving the clarity, the timelines in our reporting forms? And the other one that goes along with that, I'm going to just jump right to it, and then you can say what you want, has to do with our policies. And I know that every year in the spring, we look at the handbook and we make suggestions. And I'm wondering, is the plan to just wait for that review until the spring or to start looking at, as the task force has identified areas, that we could look to make improvements to try to respond to those in a timely way, in looking at just improving those systems of communication?
Just so you know, we, we're not just waiting for the spring. We're already looking at all of our policies, because if we waited to the spring, we would never get through what we needed to. The, but as far as publication and, and getting that out to families and having all of our families aware, we did a whole lot this year on trying to get our families to be able to have it in multiple languages so they could access the policies. So we are working, as a matter of fact, I have a meeting with staff tomorrow relative to some of those. So please know that for condensed purposes, because this was a rather lengthy report that I prepared with a few staff members, that I tried to simplify things, but know that this isn't just an annual event. The, the annual event is the adoption of the handbook. But the policies and the practices, we actually would be submitting to the committee as, as we go forward.
I have a question.
It's okay.
The last point I wanted to bring up, and that has to do with, as the superintendent mentioned, the diversity hiring and really making some initiatives in, you know, broadening the diversity of our staff. I was wondering if we could get some kind of a, you know, report with some of the points that some, I know there's specific organizations you can reach out to. I mean, you mentioned a job fair in March, so maybe around that time, to just provide a, you know, a report to the school committee about what are some of the specific action items, organizations you've reached out to, or, or schools, whatever, to try to broaden the pool of candidates coming to work in the Lowell Public Schools. I thank you all for your indulgence in my time.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Superintendent, you, you raised your hand a few minutes ago. I didn't know if you still had something to say or.
No, thank you. I'll be, we, we will be, obviously, right after the event, we'll, we'll be bringing your report on not only that job fair, but other initiatives, because I know that the HR office is reaching out to various other groups to help them in the system in identifying ways to, to hire and attract minorities. It, it isn't, it isn't very, as simple as, you know, I don't want to leave everybody here with the impression that, that's it, we're going to do these things and we're going to solve it all in one day, in, in one year. It's not going to happen. This is a problem that every district in America faces, and this is a problem that every organization also faces, not just any, the school districts, other organizations. You all work with different organizations, and look around you when you go to work, and you'll find out that you pretty much mirror our, our offices. And, but that doesn't mean that we will sit and do nothing. We will, we will, I'm sure we will come up and, and report back to you on that. One last comment, Mr. Mayor, if you, I want to go back to the earlier comment made by Ms. Connie Martin with respect to having these people who participated in the restorative justice to appear in front of the, the subcommittee, high school subcommittee. That is not a given. Please understand that part of the restorative justice, we're dealing with minors that have to have the permission of their parents to do so. And we are also dealing with employees that may or may not want to participate because their employees issue. And, and I also would like to mention that the program themselves, as I understand it, and I'm certainly not an expert in that matter at all, but Ms. Turkin can, can add to it, they don't, they don't necessarily advocate for, you know, their people to go public, because the whole, the whole idea is for people getting together in their, their confidentiality and, and be able to resolve their problems between the two parties and how to live with it. So we will, we will ask, and that's about all we can do.
Ms. Turkin, did you sum down?
I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Superintendent. That was one of the things that I did want to address, that because of the nature of, you know, the, the work that was done with the staff and students, I'm not sure that that would be something we can bring public. But I certainly will reach out to the organization and I, but I, my sense is that you'll see the, the outgrowth of the work that students and staff have done. And actually, you're seeing some of that already that's been put forth in this, this report. The, the other item that I wanted to allude to is that Ms. Mustardy mentioned that, you know, they're simple little responses to things. Please note that, that beneath each of these responses are very, there is an intensive amount of work that we're going to need to do. The other piece is that these responses are only a few. If you look closely at the recommendations, there are many things that we have yet to tackle, and we will tackle them. So I just wanted you to be aware that we didn't just self-select and say, oh, that these are nice and we'll just forget the others. These are the things that we are currently working on, but we know we need to address all of the others as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Ms. Martin?
Just to say that I, I certainly didn't mean to propose it as punishment. So if they are not interested in coming to present, or if it doesn't work with their, with their mission and whatnot, that, that's perfectly fine. So I, I think that's, you know, that's an important distinction. I do think that it, it's going to be incumbent upon the administration and certainly on this committee to ensure that we keep this conversation happening. To me, that seemed like a natural way to do it, but I am certainly open to any other ways that we can ensure that we continue to hold ourselves and, and our district as a whole to a high standard when we, when we talk about our response to, to this situation and to moving forward. So again, let them know, I wasn't trying to be mean, but any way we can get the information, that would be great.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion, Ms. Mustardy?
Sorry, I just want to make one final comment. I, I want to say upfront, I, I think that the diversity in our schools is our greatest strength. And I, I don't in any way expect that there's a quick fix for any of this, because it's also our greatest challenge, not only as a district, as a city, I mean, as a country. You know, it's just working, we have what, 39 languages? Was that the, the study for, 39 languages spoken in our schools? It's awesome and challenging for our staff, for our students, for the whole community. And to echo what Ms. Martin said, my, my real thrust here is, my focus is to have steps that we're going to be taking, consistent steps, moving forward. That's really what my intention with, and I knew that these little paragraphs represent hours and hours of work and meetings. I didn't mean to diminish that, but just that, you know, for me, the focus is, we can be better, let's be better. And, and to use those recommendations as a starting point for doing that. Thank you.
Mr. Dakota?
I'm glad you brought that up, Ms. Mustardy, because having been at the high school for 18 years, I want to attest to the strength of the diversity that we have at the high school and how the staff works so well with them, that this, this one incident puts a stain on that. And I hope that we can get past this, because the school is a fabulous place for the diversity of our student population.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to accept the report as a report of progress. All in favor, all opposed, so voted. Next item on business. Is home education? Superintendent?
Yes, this is a request for a home education from a family. And we get many of these throughout the year. And any other comment on this? Ms. Abrams?
No, my, I guess my only comment is we have all paperwork and everything is fine, so we can move forward with this.
Okay, the motion approved. Motion approved by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Hoi. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Mustardy?
Yes.
Mr. Jenrin?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you. The next item is under new business. It's a vote to accept a grant award in the amount of $42,000 to the Henry J. Robinson School from Summerstar Foundation for Nature, Art and Humanity Incorporated. Chair would entertain a motion to approve. We have a motion approved by Mr. Hoi, seconded by Ms. Martin. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Mustardy?
Yes.
Mr. Jenrin?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you. We have five requests for people to attend conventions and conferences. The chair would entertain a motion to bundle all five into one motion. We have a motion by Ms. Martin to, to do that, seconded by Mr. Gignac. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed. And now we would need a, a roll call on a motion to approve all five conferences and convention requests. We have a motion by Mr. Hoi to do that, seconded by Mr. Gignac. Roll call on that motion.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Mustardy?
Yes.
Mr. Jenrin?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Next, under communications, we have a letter of appreciation to Peta D'Amico, Lowell High School senior aerospace sciences instructor, participants of the Lowell High School winter concert, and Dr. Sharon Clark, Fine Arts Department head and culinary arts instructors, Mary Jakes and Diane Lewis Allen. Chair would entertain a motion to accept, and the communication placed it on file. Mr. Hoi, so moves. Mr. Dakota, seconded as a motion. Discussion on the motion, Mr. Hoi.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say inauguration day, I had a tremendous time. We'll talk about some things that happened at City Hall that day, but that will come at another time. I just want to say that people at this Daniel P. Kane Courtyard Restaurant, I would, I'm willing to bet we had a better meal than you did at Cobblestones. It was one of the best meals I've ever had in my life, really. I'm serious. They did an outstanding job. I haven't been here in about 20 years, getting one, to one more thing. The Color Guard was awesome for us, too. But this thing right here, Mayor, Live, Love, Dance. It's a winter dance concert that was held at the Irish Auditorium. I've never seen anything like it in my life. It was unbelievable. These people were fantastic, the kids. It was one of the best shows I've ever seen. I've, I've never been to Boston and seen a show this good. So there's a lot of names to thank, but I keep hearing this name of Rosie Bannister. So I just wanted to tell you, if you want to fight some diversity and all those things, there it is right there. We need more of this. We need more of this. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have motion to accept it and place it on file. Do you think I went to the wrong place?
No, I think, I just telling you, it was the best meal I've ever had.
All in favor of the motion to accept and place on file, all opposed, so voted. Next item of business is under professional and personal, the members of the Lowell High School Administration, the members of the Lowell High School Administrators Association hereby donate fifteen sick days, uh, to Sherry, um, Volakis, Lowell High School Guidance, Guidance Counselor. We need a motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed, roll call. I'm sorry.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
And the last item is a motion to adjourn. We have a motion, we have a motion to adjourn, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All in favor, all opposed, we stand adjourned at seven fifty, seven forty, seven fifty.
Seven forty-nine.
Seven forty-nine.
Who, who was the first? I couldn't hear it. I know, I heard Mr. Gign, Ms. Doherty was the second. Oh. Mr. Hoi?
Awesome.
No, it doesn't. It's not like it's gonna be called. No, I just wanted to know about the, the agenda, and I'm just gonna prefer for the discussion.